Almost two years ago, made our trip to the Netherlands and have been engaged in our Dutch Dialogues journey. So they've been a part of that journey in a way as well. So I'm going to get off the spot here. And just I think our agenda, Nancy, is to call on you first to give us an update maybe of the history quickly. And then we'll move on to the project itself. And thank you again, not just for being here, but for y'all's incredible partnership throughout this really journey that we're on. Thank you. Nancy Parrish.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Nancy Parrish. I am the Chief of Planning with the Army Corps of Engineers here in Charleston. I'm going to take just a couple of minutes to go over a little bit about our planning process within the Corps of Engineers. Our three-year planning cycle to do a feasibility study. And then Wes Wilson is the PM for this project will take over and talk about the specifics of the Charleston Peninsula Study and how it relates to our planning process. So you see the first slide on the screen. Our process is called SMART Planning, which is of course an acronym. It's not SMART versus DUMPLanning. But it is meant to be specific and measurable, attainable, risk-informed, and timely. And you will also hear often, we talk about our three-by-three study process, or three-by-three-by-three, I should say. And this comes to us out of the Water Resources and Reform Development Act of 2014, where Congress told the Corps of Engineers, we will do our feasibility studies in three years. We will use $3 million. And then we will have three levels of vertical team engagement, which is the local level, which is, you know, the Charleston District and our partners with the city and our local stakeholders. We also engage with our Major Subordinate Command in Atlanta, which is the South Atlantic Division of Corps of Engineers, and then our higher headquarters in DC. So Wes, if you want to go to the next slide, please? Our feasibility study process, I'm going to rearrange my screen. Over the course of the three years, this is how our time breaks down. And we spend, across the middle of this, I don't know how to organize this. Across the middle of this is our timeline. You see that we go from a more conceptual understanding of our project area. We refine over time and our detail increases over time. So the first three months, we do a lot of scoping. Wes will talk about the scoping workshops we had with the city to invite public input, stakeholder input, and agency input as we began this process. Our first milestone there is the little number one in a circle. We developed an array of alternative measures that we could use to address storm surge inundation on the peninsula, which is what we were charged with doing from Congress, to look at storm surge inundation within the peninsula. So we had an array of alternatives at that time, things that we were looking at. And that was in our first three months of our study. So that's a quick, dirty list. And then we spent the next year looking at those alternatives in more detail, in depth, adding sort of, like I said, the level of uncertainty starting to decrease. We're getting more and more information until we were able to select a tentatively selected plan, which we did back in February. Milestone number two, you see there is TSP is Tentatively Selected Plan. We had that meeting back in February. And that is the result of a year's worth of analysis of all the alternatives that the team had come up with, comparing those against the future of doing no project whatsoever, which we call the future without project or... So making sure that we're doing what we're doing is better than doing nothing at all. So at the TSP milestone meeting, we present that to our Major Subordinate Command and our headquarters' decision makers. And at that point, we release the plan to the public in the form of a draft report. So right now, we are in this period between Milestone Two and Milestone Three, where we have got a draft report out for public review. It goes through an agency technical review. And ours is going through an independent external peer review, where we have experts outside of the Corps of Engineers check the engineering and decision-making that we based our selection of a plan on. And we are collecting comments so that we can incorporate those into our, into our plan as we move through the rest of this process. So our next milestone, which is coming up in about six months, we have the agency decision milestone, I think that's in early October. At that point, we will have completed our review process. We'll know whether we have any fatal flaws in our modeling and our engineering and in our decision-making process. And at that point, the Corps of Engineers as an agency will support the plan we've selected. And it will no longer be considered a tentatively selected plan. It will become the recommended plan in our feasibility study. Once we have that meeting, and actually currently, we do more focused analysis on that one plan. So we're doing that optimizing. We started the optimizing already. We will continue optimizing for the rest of this calendar year. And be able to... Stop it, Wes. We'll optimize the plan. We'll get through a final report that we will send up for Congress to authorize and appropriate funds for us to do construction. I'm sorry. Want to go to the next slide, please? So our planning process consists of six steps, which you can see down the left side of this slide. We identify problems. We agree on an objective for our study. We develop alternative plans. We then compare those plans to one another. Again, we compare them against a future with doing nothing at all or a no-action alternative. We compare those plans to one another and select the plan that optimizes the net benefits to federal government investment. Wes will go through these steps that we did for this particular study, so you can see what kinds of alternatives we considered and how we made the decisions that we did to get to the plan that's in the draft report that is out for public review right now. So Wes, if you want to go?
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So the first thing, as Nancy mentioned, this is a coastal storm damage reduction project. The main driver of this is coastal storm surge. However, we do take secondary impacts such as sea level rise and high tides into account in our analysis and our modeling. So with that being said, with storm surge, we identified three problems on the peninsula. Storm surge could adversely affect economic sustainability, put life safety at risk, and cut off access to critical facilities. So these are our problem statements. We are working towards defining the alternatives that can meet these problems and objectives. The opportunities with coastal storm reduction projects, we have an opportunity to do some recreational features. And a recreational feature, for example, would be a walkway, something that you guys have on the high battery and low battery. We could extend this to different portions of the alignment of our, the wall around the peninsula. So the recreational opportunities is one of the things that we're looking at now. So with input from our stakeholders, we came up and had developed two scoping meetings in the fall of 2018, where we made it through each iteration of the planning process that Nancy described. Stakeholders from these meetings included reps from local colleges. We had the hospital district, MLC specifically. We had some local A&amp;E firms like AECOM. We had state and federal agencies. And then our main historical societies in Charleston. So they all came together to talk about what are the problems on the peninsula in relation to storm surge? What can we do to help reduce the risk of damages? What kind of measures can we implement to reduce those risk of measures, reduce those risk of damages for coastal storm surge? So we presented this information. We had developed several structural management measures as well as non-structural management measures. I'm going to go through a couple of the structural management measures. I don't want to go through all these in detail. They are listed in the draft report in much more detail. But we've identified over 30 structural measures that we could implement for coastal storm surge. Some were carried forward for analysis and modeling, and some were screened early in the process. One of the ones that we get significant comment on is the storm surge barrier. And that one was screened early in the process also with the recommendation of the Dutch Dialogues. The storm surge barrier is essentially a large seawall from Sullivan's Island to Morris Island with a gate for navigation traffic. The Dutch ID challenges, as well as we did, consistent with geographic and geological H&amp;H challenges of implementing this type of barrier in the geographic setting of Charleston Harbor. Some of these measures were carried forward for analysis and some were combined as features into an initial array of alternatives that I'll talk about in just a second. So those are the structural alternatives. The next slide, I'm sorry if this is hard to read, but we've got quite a few of them, are about 25 non-structural measures we identified in those scoping meetings. Some of these, some of these non-structural measures, the Corps has authority to implement, and some we're doing analysis on right now. And some, some of these measures, we provide as a recommendation in our draft report for the city to implement. Just for an example, if something the Corps does not have authority would be one and two, rain gardens and conservation easements. That's something we could recommend the city do, but the Corps does not have authority to implement. What we do have authority to implement and do is, for example, item number 13 and 14, elevate structures and floodproof structures. This is, this is in the Corps toolbox of non-structural measures and something we are looking for areas outside of the wall. And these non-structural areas, I just want to keep in mind, they are providing the same level of protection as areas inside the wall. Go on to the next slide. So after we got all these measures, we formulated an initial array of alternatives. We have seven alternatives. Alternatives one, two, and three are essentially the same alternative with the addition of a, of a new feature in each. So the storm surge wall is one alternative. And areas outside of that wall were left unprotected. So that, that alternative was screened. Alternative two is a storm surge wall with non-structural features. And that was carried forward for further analysis in our final array. Alternative three is a storm surge wall with non-structural and a wave attenuator. So the wave attenuator is just a different feature. And that was carried forward for further analysis. Alternatives four, five, six, and seven did not meet our, one of our problem objectives. Alternative four, non-structural only, is essentially going through the peninsula and raising all the homes that are under the level of protection. With that being said, you would still have access, you still have issues with access to your critical infrastructure. So with that, we had to screen alternative four. Alternative five, historic creeks, was revitalizing some of the historic creeks around the peninsula. However, that was more of an interior drainage solution than a coastal storm surge solution. And then alternatives six and seven were mainly focused on storage of water, canals, recessing parks, and things along cisterns and things along those lines. And again, however, storage of water did not reduce the risk of damages on the peninsula from a storm surge. These seven alternative plans were screened based on how well they met the planning objectives. And the principles and guidance we have in the Corps of Engineers is based on four criteria. The completeness of the plan, the effectiveness of the plan, efficiency, and acceptability. So with that being said, two and three were carried forward for the final array of alternatives. And essentially, the only difference between alternative and three is in alternative three, it's the addition of a wave attenuator. A wave attenuator, an example of that would be a breakwater. A breakwater is a pile of rocks used to break wave action from a storm surge. And I'm going to get into more detail on our selected plan, but this is an example of the final array. Alternative two is the one without the breakwater. And alternative three is the breakwater, which is on the tip of the peninsula by the battery. And I'll jump into more details on alternative three, which is our tentatively selected plan.
Can we jump in and ask a question at any point on this?
Yeah, I'm all done with the slides. So now's a good time to pause for questions. I think that's fine.
Can you go back to the previous slide, one right before? So on, is five, six, and seven more comparable with the Dutch Dialogues premises about creating these structures or these amenities to have a dual effect or dual purpose?
So alternatives five, six, and seven are more for interior drainage. And we do do interior drainage in our analysis, but that interior drainage is based on the level of drainage impacted at the wall. If we construct the wall and we add additional drainage risk to the peninsula, that's what we mitigate for. These alternatives five, six, and seven are not necessarily creating parks and recreation or creating storage. They're, they're more for an interior drainage. And the Corps does not have authority to do that or implement those types of alternatives with a coastal storm project like we have here.
This is Councilman Gregory. Question?
Councilmember Gregory?
Yeah.
Can you speak a little louder?
Sure. Is this better?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, on one of the previous screens, I think you had as an option, creating a canal along East Bay Street? Did I read that correctly? But that's an option that was not taken?
That is, that is correct, sir. A canal would not reduce the risk of damages from storm surge. Surge would go over the canal and still impact the peninsula.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions so far?
I'm just, Mayor?
Councilmember Mitchell?
I'm just waiting to see how far is they going to extend this, because I have a lot of people in the community, which is an area that I represent. And they were concerned about it because they said even if this is done, it's not coming in the area that they have, which is Bridgeview, which floods out every time a storm comes, because they're right there near the water. And that's flooded out every time. You can't get in, you can't get out of that place anytime a storm comes when you have flooding. And that's a safety problem that I feel. So a lot of them are concerned because they figure that it's not coming in that area, nor in the area of Rosemont. They're questioning, questioning these things also. So I'm just listening to hear.
Yes, sir. I think we're going to get there and address those issues.
Good. All right. Thank you.
All right. Can you guys see the interactive story map?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go through the tentatively selected plan, and then we can pause for additional questions and answers. But alternative three was the tentatively selected plan. And how the Corps defines the tentatively selected plan is it has the highest net benefits, the biggest bank of the federal dollar. That's what we're identifying. The tentatively selected plan, and this is a pretty eye-opening number for me, is it prevents $4.7 billion of damages reduced over a 50-year period of analysis. So currently on the peninsula, we estimated you have $14 billion in assets on peninsula, eight and a half billion in structural, five and a half billion in contents. The alternative three proposal would prevent $4.7 billion in damages reduced over that 50-year period analysis. And this is based on the modeling of a 12-foot NAVD-88 wall. And to give you a frame of reference, so that a 12-foot wall, your high battery wall is at nine feet NAVD-88. So it adds three feet to the high battery wall. And truly, the wall of elevation is based on topography of the peninsula. Like I said, the high battery wall would be raised from nine to 12. In the hospital district, from the ground, the wall would be between five and seven feet. Up Morrison Avenue, the wall would be between one and three feet. So it really is based on topography. It's not a 12-foot wall around the peninsula. All right. So what we're doing right now, I caveat this, and I caveat it on every presentation I make, is the elevation and alignment of the selected plan measures are considered conceptual and not final. We are in the feasibility phase. The feasibility phase determines benefits and costs. To determine this, we have to come up with some sort of conceptual alignment to see if there is a potential for federal investment. So when we see the cost numbers below and the benefits, there is, there is a strong benefit-cost ratio. You know, you're preventing $4.7 billion of damages at a cost of about $1.7 billion. So that is, that is a higher benefit-to-cost ratio, which is what the federal government looks for when investing in these types of projects. I'm pretty sure you guys have all seen the alignment. I mean, it is a perimeter protection system. This is what was recommended by the Dutch Dialogues as well. So, so a little bit on the measures. Hang on with me. So the first measure is the storm surge wall. And again, this alternative has three features. It has a storm surge wall, the non-structural measures, and a wave attenuator. And everything is at 12 feet. What was modeled at 12 feet NAVD-88, which is maximizing your net benefits. So there are two types of walls we're assuming in this feasibility phase. And even the type of walls can change between feasibility and actual design. We realize, we realize that technology could change and real estate conditions could change, which could also impact the type of wall that's constructed. So the T-wall, the one on your left, is your wall that would be on high ground. And this is what's similar to what you guys have already on the high and low battery wall. The combo wall is something that would be constructed in the marsh. And what this particular example is, is much, much, much larger than what we were going to propose on the peninsula. And this is something out of the New Orleans area. Again, the T-wall is areas where it's constructed on high ground. And that's mainly along the Ashley, I'm sorry, along the Cooper side of the peninsula. We are looking to move some of the combo wall that would be constructed in the marsh on the high ground on the Ashley side. And that's what, that's the current phase we're in right now, is to reduce environmental impacts by bringing the combo wall to high ground along some parts of the Ashley. Okay, storm surge gates. Throughout the alignment of the wall, we will strategically place these storm surge gates around tidal creeks. They will be left open 99% of the time and only close at low tide during a storm event. By being left open, it'll be a natural flow of water going in and out of these tidal creeks to maintain the fish habitat and marsh behind our constructed wall. This is a rough example of what a wave attenuation 3D image would look like on the tip of the peninsula. The one we have shown here is an elevation 16. However, we are looking at lower elevations through the optimization phase of... So they'll have less new shade impacts. All right. These are the non-structural measures areas. We are currently doing some analysis. These areas will be provided the same level of protection as areas inside the wall. We are exploring all options in these areas. In Bridgeview, we have a site visit scheduled for 27 May to shoot first floor elevations to determine what kind of non-structural measures that we can implement. And just, you know, just for an example, if they, if the Bridgeview first floor elevations are over 12, our level of protection is for anything under. So that's what we need to go out there and determine is what are the first floor elevations for the Bridgeview community? And then the Rosemont area on the neck up there, we are still assessing. We will do a windshield engineering survey, structural analysis, to see if we can do some home raising in that area. And we are determining an alternative that will be acceptable and will be available for the public to review during our second review period in early 2021. And then the small area along, around the Ashley River is Lowes Point. And the majority of those homes are elevated, but there may be one or two structures we need to go in there and assess to see if they meet the first floor elevation criteria of 12 feet. All right, let me go.
Wes, can I interrupt for one second?
Yep.
And clarify that in Bridgeview and Rosemont, the reason the wall does not extend that way is that the feasibility of, the constructibility of it is not there. It's a difficult terrain to build a wall. So we're looking for an alternative way to provide the same protection in those communities without connecting it to the wall that we're building elsewhere. Because of the topography, it's very difficult to build a wall in those areas.
Can I ask the following question?
Okay.
Okay, if a wall is not there, not just for those areas, but what happens downstream or cross-stream, for instance, on the Ashley River? All right? If we do the wall along the peninsula, what happens to the water? Does it, does it just... What happens to the water? It doesn't go to the other side or downstream or upstream?
So I guess the question is referring to what happens to surrounding communities, impacts the surrounding communities?
Correct.
Right. So we, that is a great question. So we're undergoing additional modeling and analysis over our final feasibility alignment when that's, when that's determined. And we will include an investigation of adverse impacts into those communities. And if we determine adverse impacts, we have to take appropriate mitigation in those areas. The Corps of Engineers cannot move forward with a recommendation without addressing any potential impacts of adverse effects in any areas outside of the peninsula.
And how soon, how soon will we know that? Because I think that that is creating some nervous energy. Okay?
Right, absolutely. And we will have those results by our second comment period in early 2021 that the public will be able to review.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mitchell, that was up, that's the same.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mitchell, that was up, that's the same thing I was alluding to myself when I mentioned the Bridgeview. Because for the last two storms that was here, they were flooded out. And I did the assessment by going there, I couldn't get in and out in the EMS and places couldn't get in and out. Couldn't get in there, we had people who needed service and who took ill, and they couldn't get in because the water was, I mean, it was ocean there. So that's why I'm very, very want to find out exactly in that particular area.
Sure.
And that's why, that's why I really mentioned that, because it's, it's a disaster there to happen. Then we have new construction going on there, which we trying to keep affordable housing there. And if this is not going to work, then it's, it's not going to do any good for those areas up in that particular, but Bridgeview is located.
Right. The access is the key issue.
Right.
I don't, correctly if I'm wrong, but we didn't actually have flooding inside the units. It was more people couldn't get there and back, correct?
Well, and you couldn't get in our, well, you couldn't get in or out, so we couldn't know, we didn't know exactly how bad it was because the water came and flowed into the area. You know, from the ocean in the back, so, because the ocean is right there, the ocean is right there.
Well, that's why Wes mentioned they'll be up there just next week, twenty-seven.
Exactly.
And there's belief that they will be taking a close look at that. And I'm sure if you want to join them up there, you could, you could.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, this is Dr. James Yanni, and I appreciate the meeting. I can't see the visuals, but one of the solutions that actually was used on my property in the seventeen hundreds, which keeps my property dry on Church Street, is they put in a very deep reservoir. When water comes to the property, immediately goes into the reservoir. And then when the tide goes out, it sucks the reservoir dry. And all my neighbors can't figure out why my property is always dry and there's, there's always flooded. So if you looked at initially putting in deep reservoirs in low areas to collect the water, to stop the, to take the flooded water into the reservoir so people can still drive through those areas, and then have it drain when the tide goes out.
Well, thank you for that comment suggestion. Who is this again?
James Yanni.
Okay, thank you. Welcome your comment. I, I would like to point out to those who are on the call that this, this meeting at this point is for council members. But we're, the comment period, of course, is wide open for a comment to the Corps of Engineers. And, and we'll follow up with you. That's your number four seven eight four seven oh seven.
Yeah, I believe so, great.
Alright, any other questions from council members? Wes, you want to proceed, please?
Yes, thank you, sir. So with that being said, so the tentatively selected plan, if we go back to our problem statements, it's, you know, reduce the risk to life safety and access to critical infrastructure. So what does this plan buy you? Without a project on the peninsula, you have the potential for damages of two of your police stations, eight of your healthcare facilities, and two of your fire stations. With the project implemented, that takes to reduce the risk all the way down to zero. And, and that's a pretty telling graphic. Another thing we wanted to look at is the historical side of, of the peninsula. And the cultural resources at risk of flooding during a coastal storm event. Without a project at risk on the peninsula, it's fifty-four percent of the historic structures. With the project in place, it takes it all the way down to five historic structures. So with that, that is a pretty significant reduction without versus with a project. And that's based on twenty seventy-five forecast. The economic breakdown, and again, I'm going to reiterate, four point seven billion dollars in damages reduced over a fifty-year period of analysis. And that's based on the modeling and analysis of the twelve-foot NAVD eighty-eight wall, a wave attenuator, and non-structural measures in those three communities. This is the maximum benefits we could see on the peninsula. If we reduce the elevation of the wall, your benefits go down. If we take out features, the benefits go down. So this is, this is where we are today. Estimated total project cost is, everyone's probably seen this a few times, is one point seven billion. We are trying to reduce this number by reducing environmental mitigation in marsh. We're trying to bring the combo wall to the high ground, which is significantly cheaper. And we're looking at ways that the city can maximize the overall benefit to cost ratio. And, you know, this isn't the, and I'll stop after this, this last statement, and we can have additional comments, questions. But the Corps of Engineers is, is working on five, six, seven of these studies. And we want to, we in Charleston want to maximize your benefit cost ratio. By maximizing your benefit cost ratio, it will compete for funding better across the Corps of Engineers. And that's what we're working towards. So with that being said, I mean, we can, Mayor, if you want to, we can open it up for the next twenty minutes of questions. If that's fine.
Alright, council members, if you've got any comments or questions for Wes to answer?
So Mayor, I've got a question, just a functional question, if I might.
Yes, sir.
Wes, on the flood control gate portion of this project, who will be in charge of determining when those gates are opened and closed? And who will functionally be operating them? And I'm thinking, I mean, is there going to be a standard that says there's a National Weather Service predicted storm of some level, so they close the gates? Or will be tidally influenced? How do we know that?
So that's a great question. We will define gate closures in an operation and maintenance manual. This operation and maintenance manual is a legally binding document. So one thing we're thinking about is regards to operation, the city is in charge of opening and closing gates. Once the Corps constructs these types of projects, we turn the keys over to the city to implement and follow the operation and maintenance manuals. What we're, from a gate closure standpoint, right now, we've got an assumption of potentially closing the gate when NOAA predicts a major storm or a major tidal event, which I think is eight feet mean low, low water. So if NOAA predicts an eight-foot mean low, low water, you may have to close some gates around the city. You, you don't have to close, you probably won't have to close all the gates, but the gates in low line areas, you'll probably want to close, especially the ones around the Coast Guard Station in Lower Lockwood. That, that's what would be the trigger potentially. And then again, it's up for negotiation. It could be seven and a half feet at Lower Lockwood, or it could be eight and a half feet. It's just, it's something that we will further refine in our design phase.
So there'll be a manual, basically, we'll get a wall with a manual that will tell us when and how to operate the gates? And then is there a review process by the Army Corps annually or semi-annually about the process of opening and closing the gates?
If the city requests one, we can, we can review it. But we would probably have to do some environmental compliance work in addition with that review.
Thank you.
Alright, other council members? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much to the Army Corps. We haven't had a chance to see you face to face since you submitted this. It was great getting to know some of you as we were working with the Dutch Dialogue Teams last year. Seems like a hundred years ago in some way. So I really appreciate that you all have just kept working steadily to, to meet your own deadlines and the ones that we know will serve all of us the best. I, I, I don't really have specific questions you know, my territory is on the other side of the, west of the Ashley. And I guess I'm wondering if there's any way that we can get some look at the modeling you're doing about the wave attenuator and the other impacts to the other shorelines as you're fine tuning the, the design for the actual storm surge wall? We, we have so many unknowns out here. We don't really know, you know, what, what questions to ask or how to even think about it as residents of some of the larger areas of, of the city. So, thank you for anything you could do to give us information as you, as you get it.
Thank you. We, we will take that into account. You know, one thing with the modeling, we won't, we won't go, we probably won't start the, the modeling of the final benefit run and the final coastal modeling run until late this summer. So we wouldn't have those results until later this calendar year. And as soon as we get them, we would be happy to share with you guys before we even went to the public review in early twenty twenty-one. So we would give you guys a heads up before, before the public review.
Alright.
I got one more then, if it's, while we got Wes here, if that's okay, Mayor?
Yeah, and then I'll come to Councilmember Ware.
Okay, no, please let Councilmember Ware go, he's next, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Councilman Seaking. Do we know which way the current's going to go hypothetically if this wall is built? The wall is going to go somewhere, where does it go?
If I, if I understand your question correctly, you're, you're talking about where is the water going to go? The outside of the wall?
Correct, that's good, that's right. Thank you for pointing that out to me. So if you outside the wall, the storm surge comes in, and let's say the storm surge is eleven feet. So it's below the wall. So where, it doesn't turn around and go back out to sea? Which direction does the water go?
Well, more than likely, it would go up the Cooper and the Ashley rivers. However, the level of water that goes up there is what we're determining through additional modeling and analysis in, in over the next twelve months. And again, I'll, I'll reiterate it, if there, if there are adverse impacts to areas outside of the wall based on where the water is going, we will need appropriate mitigation measures to account for the, to count for those areas.
What would be an example of additional mitigation?
It could range from engineering, a structural mitigation measure, it could be a natural solution. It could be for, you know, it, it could be a non-structural solution such as home raising. So until we know, if, if areas outside of the wall are impacted, and what areas are impacted, we really won't be able to define what's, what potential solution we are looking at.
Okay, I got, and we won't, that modeling won't be done until when?
At the, so we're shooting for the end of the calendar year. So we'll be ready for a public review in early twenty twenty-one.
And as a, as a council, Mr. Mayor, when are we supposed to vote on this?
I think that's an issue that Mark is going to address in, in his part of the presentation. But my understanding, the first time we take a meaningful vote on it would be May of next year.
Okay, I got you. I just want to have a lot of time to hopefully get this modeling in so we can get accurate information prior, you know, prior to the poll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Seaking?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Wes. So you described this as a coastal storm surge reduction project at the very beginning, and that's what we've been talking about. One of the things I've been thinking about today a lot, and probably you have too, Wes, because by your office, I saw it was flooded last night as well. So when we've got a storm event like we had last night and a stormwater management issue comes up, have you modeled an event like last night to see what the effects are of a, of a perimeter wall around the city on the ability of the peninsula to shed excess stormwater that comes via the sky like it did last night? And huge numbers, I mean, I think some of the rain gauges showed upwards of three inches of rain an hour on the peninsula and other parts of the city, by the way. There was a lot of water. How's that all going to interplay?
Right, so, good question again. We are doing a very comprehensive interior hydrology analysis. So that's where the water is on the surface of the streets. One good thing, I think one more beneficial thing from the city is when we're doing this interior hydrology analysis, we're not assuming you guys have any drainage. So that's a more conservative approach. The water would essentially flow into marshes or flow into different low points of the city. We are taking that into account. We are looking at different things on, so the way I like to explain this is if we have a coastal storm event and without a project, you have two inches of rain around the peninsula. Because we have a wall in place, now you have two and a half inches. The Corps of Engineers has to mitigate for that extra half of inch of rain by either a pump system or, or certain interior hydro. We have to justify what, where, where and when, where and what we do to mitigate for that additional rainfall. But yes, we do have some extensive interior hydrology analysis that's already completed. And once we have the final alignment of the wall for feasibility, we will do another round of interior hydrology analysis.
So just follow up really quickly. At what stage of the process and the continuum, before it gets up for appropriation, will that analysis and then adjustments to both the project and the cost of the project be made?
So we, we will have that analysis completed at the end of our feasibility things. We are working towards having that ready for the final report. Adjustments can be made in the design phase. Again, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to know all the answers in feasibility. And what we're trying to do is identify benefits, the cost, and federal investment. And these types of things, interior hydrology analysis can, can further be looked at and refined in our head phase.
If I may follow up on that, Wes, but aren't you in a way budgeting now some mitigation by proposing the five or six pump stations?
Right, that's, that's an assumption, sir, that, yes, sir, that we're making is right now, we're assuming five or six pump stations around the perimeter of the alignment of the wall to mitigate for any of that interior hydrology flooding. You know, that's not to say that these pump stations will be bigger or smaller as we get into pet phase, but right now, we're assuming the same size around the perimeter of the peninsula. But they could be tweaked in design.
And, and you mentioned your approach is conservative, that you're assuming in essence that we have no drainage systems in place. So when our spring fish burn tunnel pump system comes online and adds that capacity at this point, you're not even, you're, you're not taking that into account either?
No, no, we're not taking any, any pipes under the ground into account in our interior hydrology analysis, which is better for the city in regards to what we need to put on the, on the outside of the, the perimeter of the wall.
So, so that would be a benefit, even though you're looking at it as mitigation, the fact that we do have some drainage systems in place, and we are certainly working on improvements and have specific improvement underway, your mitigation would add to our drainage capacity, isn't that correct?
Correct, sir, yes.
Councilmember Ware?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wes, that analysis taken into account with the man, because Councilman Seaking just said, with water coming in from over here, will any analysis consider, the city has an old sewer system that's, that's right now no longer utilized. Does any of that analysis take into account any of those tunnels? Somehow, if they could be of help, in particular for water coming in over here?
So I guess, yeah, good question. So anything underground, we have done no modeling, we're assuming no drains. Anything above the ground is where we're doing the water surface modeling of where the water goes if we have a significant rainfall. I believe that's what you're, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, in other words, right now, there's a, there have been limited instances where we have actually used some of those sewer tunnels, put old, well, I mean, it's old sewer tunnels, it could be a hundred. where we have actually used some of those sewer tunnels, put old, well, I mean, it's old sewer tunnels. It could be 100 years old or more. And we've put a pipe through them to alleviate overhead flooding. Now, we haven't done that to a great degree, and I'm just wondering if you're going to do an analysis, if somehow if those old pathways could be a part of the solution in your analysis?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to think about that question a little bit on how we can utilize or how we can look at the existing drainage systems for hydrology purposes.
Okay.
Mayor, before, before I jump off here, I'd just like to, one thing that I'd like to mention that I didn't mention in my presentation. The federal government, the Corps of Engineers, in regards to the overall cost of this project is pretty significant. So more than likely, the Corps will look at doing a phased approach of construction. What a phased approach looks like is we'll have to phase this wall out into different sections. So a phase one approach would be to construct the wall from the low battery, the Coast Guard Station low battery wall and tie in at high ground at the citadel. That way, the Corps of Engineers is not putting up the entire amount of this project at one time. The city does not have to cost share the entire amount of this project at one time. It's done in a phased approach. And then you could do a phase two and a phase three of along the Cooper Riverside, and then a phase four Wagner Terrace, and a phase five Breakwater. So when we go to, when we go, if this project is authorized and appropriated for funding, it'll more than likely need to be broken out in phases. So I just wanted to make that, mention that for everyone's sake, that you know, this, the cost share, the 600 million or estimated 600 million is not something that will be, need to be provided at, right away after feasibility.
Well, well, thank you for mentioning that. It's kind of a relief. It's hard to conceive of some of the numbers we've been talking about, but I'm taking the bite of the elephant, one bite at a time, certainly would be more manageable than trying to swallow the whole thing, I'll tell you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I, I think we should all be interested in the phased approach, Wes. But would, would there, I mean, is there a precedent then that once, once we agree on the final project, all five phases, that the, that the price tag would be sort of frozen in terms of the city's contribution, or would it be priced out in bill dollars, you know, over a 20-year period? Or how will that work? Is it, is it a price plus, you know, inflation factor or something?
Yeah, it's, it's price plus inflation. So our construction start date is estimated at 2026. So we inflate all the costs to start construction at 2026. However, with a phased approach, we would need to look at, you know, increments of when we would expect to construct each phase. And we would have to make a general assumption about that when we develop our final cost estimates for the feasibility.
So knowing you've got the inflation factor, is that built into the 1.75?
Yes, absolutely. It is. And it has a very high contingency amount. One of the things we're looking to do in the optimization is to reduce the contingency. Our contingency is at 53%, right? So by reducing the uncertainty of, and going through our analysis, that needs to come down pretty significantly, which is going to reduce your overall project cost.
Okay, well, I'm sure you'll be telling us a lot more about that as we go along. So thank you.
This is Gregory. I keep going in and out of Zoom, so I've got to be quick. And I got off when you were talking about the phased approach. My question is, if we need 1.7 bill, however, would that be approved totally, or would it be done by phases?
The total project cost would be authorized as the total project cost. However, what the government can appropriate is based on budget availability and how other, if the government has the funding available. So you, more than likely, these types of projects are phased. You would do constructing portions, you know, and that's why we're thinking of doing a phased approach. But to do a phased approach, we have to be able to tie in the wall to high ground to ensure that you don't leave any, any holes or any issues in regards to potential storm surge threat and then the water going around if you're not tied in.
Wes, I have one more really quick question before you go. If you don't mind. When in your timeline and your continuum of the process, will the routing of the wall become finalized from the Army Corps of Engineers perspective?
So are you, so the routing as in the alignment, correct?
All right, yes, your term alignment. Thank you.
So the feasibility is to determine benefits and costs. The city is responsible for obtaining the real estate in the design phase for us to construct the wall. When the city provides us the real estate to construct the wall, that is when the alignment is finalized. And that is not till the design phase.
Okay, so just a quick follow up. Do we have some discretion then as a city to set the alignment, or does it have to be set within the parameters that you've come up with in what is now your temporary, tentatively selected plan, but ultimately will be your plan? I'm just trying to figure out where that interplay is.
Right. So it's based on benefits and costs. If you move the alignment that negatively impacts your benefits, that's, the Corps can't, I mean, that's not what we agreed to in feasibility. If you move the alignment for somewhere that's three times as more of as expensive as what we've identified in feasibility, then the city would have to pay the cost difference of our proposed alignment versus the much, much, much more expensive alignment the city would like to do. With, so there is some flexibility. There is some wiggle room in design. However, if the costs are dramatically increased and the alignment changes in design, the city would have to pay for the difference.
So do you believe that the alignment that you've come up with at this point is not only the most effective, but the most cost-effective way to do this?
Yes, and that's, yes.
So I think from your perspective, then, if we came up with a rerouting, a realignment, the presumption from your perspective would be that would be an increased cost and therefore would be something we'd have to pay for?
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it.
And it would pay for the, it would pay for the difference. So
Okay, I get it. Okay, thank you.
I mean, probably with some wiggle room, right, Wes?
Yeah.
If you've got the, the alignment going down Lockwood Boulevard, and when we go out to obtain the real estate, we end up on the other side of the street than what you had just because we were able to get the real estate there for you. I mean, that's not a significant.
No, no, no. I'm talking about, yes, sir. I'm talking about if you're on land and then you want to move it to the water. You know, it's, the land is three times cheaper than moving the alignment to the water. Or if, you know, we're going down, you know, Street X, and you want to move it to Street Y, but there is no benefit to move it to Street Y other than to make, you know, somebody happy that's not even being protected by this wall, then that would be a cost incurred by the city because there was no additional benefit. You're just adding costs to the study or to the problem.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I have one final question. Thank you so much. Wes, we didn't talk anything about the NEPA process. Is that already factored in? Or will there be a complete process or just the environmental impact study, or what would, what would you?
So we're doing a environmental assessment, which is less than, quote unquote, NEPA compliance as an environmental impact statement. That's ongoing. And then I'll let Nancy talk about the gist of that. But we are doing our agency coordination and we're working with our federal and state agencies right now to discuss the environmental aspects of this.
Right. We are, through our feasibility process, we incorporate NEPA fully so that our feasibility report is fully NEPA compliant. So it's an integrated feasibility report and environmental assessment at this stage because we have determined that, at least for now, we have determined that an environmental impact statement is not necessary. Then environmental assessment is the appropriate level of investigation. But as Wes said, we do all of our inter-agency coordination in addition to that assessment during the feasibility phase.
Thank you.
So Wes, you alluded to that situation where the placement of the wall relative to a property that's already built above, base floor elevation is above the elevation of the wall. So for example, you got a 12-foot wall and you got a house that's built up to 14 feet base blood elevation. How do you view that, if you don't mind?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a great question. So there are areas that are not included in our storm surge wall line. And if you look at the map, one of the, one of the areas is around the aquarium area. And all of these properties have a base elevation level higher than our proposed storm surge wall elevation, right? So their base is higher than our wall elevation. This will do nothing to reduce the risk of damages during a storm event for those properties.
Right. And, and so that impacted your proposed alignment?
Correct. Correct. There's, you know, the constructability aspect of it for areas that are along dockside and along the waterfront. By putting a wall around those facilities, you're impacting their water access, their dockside operations. You're impacting the environment. You're impacting their viewshed. There are certain things that we have taken into consideration when looking at the alignment in these areas.
Thank you for that clarification. Any, any other questions before we move over to Mark Wilbert and the city side?
So Mark, I mean Wes and Nancy, thank you so much for being with us. You're welcome to stick around, but you've probably heard Mark's part of the presentation a time or two already. But please stay if you'd like, but we thank you for joining us today and, and directly presenting this to council. And I know you've got a lot of other public engagement planned.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Wes.
So next, I'd like to basically turn the rest of the program over to Mark Wilbert, who's going to discuss the city efforts and timeline of, of our partnership, but the parts that are more directly our responsibility. Mark, I'll give you the floor. Did we lose you? He was there.
Mark, I think you need to unmute yourself.
You're still muted.
Okay, I'm here now. Let me see if I can share the screen here with you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
Mark, Mark.
Yes.
Mike, one real quick question before you get started that I forgot to ask once, but you'll know the answer to this. Has the congressional delegation been briefed on this project yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Both state and federal.
Oh, I was thinking about the feds. All right, thanks.
Yep. So first of all, thank you all very much for your attention tonight, and some of those were some really excellent questions. And I certainly appreciate it. My goal in the next few minutes is to offer to you some things that we've been hearing. My guess is these are some things that you've been hearing. And my goal is to address these issues with you so that you can help, hopefully, help answer some questions from your constituents. And then what I'd like to do is work through what we're doing on outreach and stakeholder engagement from both the city side and the Corps side, what some of our worklist items are moving forward. A little bit about timeline that Nancy just covered really pretty coherently, or pretty completely, so I won't spend a lot of time. And then I'd like to talk about some things that where we would certainly like some city council input and actions that perhaps you could take and we could help you with as we get through the process. So the next, the next thing that I'd like to talk about real quick is this optimization. You heard Wes talk about that. That's the phase that we're in right now is optimization, and it's incumbent upon the city staff to be working with the Army Corps of Engineers as we help them through optimization get the National Economic Development Plan closer to what the city may like. And already, we've made some progress, but there are some areas that we're still working on, and actually, a few areas we're still working on. That's going to occur between April and August. And, but it's really important to understand that the more work that we do with the Army Corps now to get things into the National Economic Plan, that's the best opportunity to get this thing cost shared at 6535. So that's really important that we work hard on that. On outreach, we are hearing a lot of talk about outreach and concern about outreach in this COVID-19 environment. So we are focusing our outreach on awareness and education, and we really want to encourage citizens, businesses, groups to submit public comments to the Army Corps of Engineers on their website. As this is the time to do it, we've got 30 days left to do it, and it's so important that those public comments get put in to the register that the Army Corps is keeping. So between now and June 19th, which is the end of the public comment period, we have about somewhere between 17 and 19 engagements scheduled. Either the city doing it solo, we've already done a couple already. The Army Corps doing it solo. In fact, the reason that Wes and Nancy had to leave is they're actually having virtual office hours now where people can call them directly and go one-on-one with, to give input and ask questions about this. They do it every Thursday night from four to five. And then we're going to do some joint outreach sessions with some of our partners in the community. And, and some of those partners that we're working with is the Coastal Conservation League, Preservation Society, Groundswell, Surf Rider, and the Nature Conservancy. We really want to try to use those networks to get this out as far as we can in this really challenging COVID-19 environment.
And our neighborhood associations, correct?
What's that?
And our neighborhood associations.
And our neighborhood associations. I'm going to talk about those here coming up in a minute. Neighborhood associations as well. Also, let's see, it's important to know that through all of that, we want the comments back to the city. Then after June 19th, my hope is to get additional community input, which we will focus on more what I'm calling values-based input. And this is something that talking to our partners, that the Dutch Dialogues, it's really important. And that's to get things that are important to Charleston from a city perspective into the report. And I'll talk a little bit more about what they look like in a minute, but that's, we're going to focus on communities, business, advocacy groups, and we want to hear from elected officials. So that's also. In addition to that, our planning department is going to take on a effort that they're calling stakeholder engagement, which is going to be an inclusive design, study, and outreach effort. And I think their hope is to get out and reach folks that potentially could be impacted with the alignment of the wall. That's going to be led by the Design Center, and hopefully, our Dutch Dialogue team members will be able to return to help with that as well. So once you do that, then how do we get those into the record? So like I said before, and again, I can't say this too much, between now and June 19th, public comment, public comment. Please get those in. Between now and August of 2020, we'll be working on the National Economic Plan, that's city staff and Army Corps. Between now and September 3rd, I will be compiling information. I'll be sharing it with all of city staff, with the mayor. And that's really information that we as a city want to get into. The report as a non-federal sponsor, and that's based on just about everything I mentioned. Stakeholder feedback, community feedback, elected and staff input. And again, that's that value-based and collective. In early 2021, there's going to be a second public and collective. In early 2021, there's going to be a second public comment period. It'll be for 30 days this time. And again, we want to encourage everyone in the community to get out and, and comment. It will be on the changes that Wes talked about between now and then. They'll republish the new changes that have come between now and then. It's really important. This is very unusual. First of all, getting a 60-day public comment period is very unusual. Getting a second public comment period, this may be the first time in Corps history that's actually happened. Between January and May, the city as the non-federal sponsor will be working with the Corps to get additional input in. And then in May is kind of when we'll have the last opportunity to get our input in to the Corps as a non-federal sponsor. That's also the time when we're going to be asked to commit our ability to provide funding to match as necessary to go forward with this project. And I'll talk about that on a slide with funding in just a minute. And then October of 2021, the final report is submitted. I think it is important, though, just for me to, to mention at this time that we, we work with the Corps. Every week, we have a meeting of all members on the PDT team. They're all over the country. We meet for an hour every Thursday. We've got many bigger meetings, and they're just a phone call away. So we do stay in constant contact with them on this project. And I don't want you to think that we're just meeting with them every couple of months. There's a lot more interaction than, than what you see on these slides. So let's move into everybody's favorite topic. This is another one that the, that we are hearing a lot about. You can read about this. This is something that I know as council is very important to you, and that's the $600 million non-federal cost share. That's the city's cost share of this. As Wes was pointing out, the first cost to this will be for preliminary engineering and design, the PED phase. And typically, preliminary engineering and design is 7% of the total construction costs, and 35% of that would be ours. And that would be for the first two years of the study. And then if you look at it, there's four phases potentially, $150 million per phase minus any amount of money that we spent in PED phase, and also any real estate acquisitions get credited to our account. So the challenges are, and these are the questions, and I tried to put them out as best I could, five to 25 years from now, what are the legitimate source of funds that could be used? And then what are those funds that could not be used? What are the potential additional source of funds? And then what are the potential new sources of revenue that could be put in place to support? I think these are the, the types of questions that we as a city will probably have to ask ourselves over the next nine months to a year, year plus, and then beyond that, as we approach authorization and appropriations. Any questions on that slide right there? Because I think that's an important slide, and I know that our CFO was on the line. Any questions that anybody wants to ask about that?
Councilmember Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you go back to your previous slide, Mark?
I sure can. This one right here?
Yeah, the one with the input from all the stakeholders. I think we have a wonderful opportunity to get, that's missing, that's missing here on this, to get input. We have a general election coming up in November. I think it would be great to have a question on the ballot, in particular for city residents. We have, we're going to have a massive turnout either if this virus is over with or through mail-in ballots, to reach out and try to get input from as many citizens as we can on the city's committing to this $600 million. We can reach a certain amount of people through neighborhood associations. We can reach a certain amount of people through historic organizations. But to really find, find the pulse of the people in the Broadway, I think we need to put a question as a referendum on the ballot. We did that for $20 million for a housing bond. This region did that for the first, when you look at major expenses, we've, we've done that for the half-cent sales tax, which rendered the $600 million for the Ravenel Bridge. As a matter of fact, we had to go out to the public three times on that. When we had to go to get the money, I think it was about $600 million for seismic repairs to the various schools because of earthquake damage. We went back and had another, I think, penny sales tax for like six years. Again, it was done out on the referendum. So I think we have a wonderful opportunity for this region to focus on the major funding problems that we have due to sea level rise. And I just don't think, this is a good effort right here, Mr. Wilbert and Mr. Mayor and council. But I think we can go a step further to get more input from people on a project this large. Because to me, this is equivalent of our big dig. They had a big dig in Boston, but they had Tip O'Neill, who was Speaker of the House at that time, that was fundling money to the city of Boston. This is, this, this is, this is an effort that's going to last for generations. And the last thing I would want would be decisions that be made in the, in the vast majority of our public walking around saying, I didn't know anything about. I don't think anybody can say, they may disagree or agree, that they didn't know about the half-cent sales tax, initial $1.2 billion request, the $600 million request. The, I think this most recent half, when they went and got the other half-cent sale, half, half cents of the penny, that was what, $2.1 or $2.2 billion? If people say that they didn't know about it, well, shame on them, because a lot of information was put out about it. But the public spoke and spoke loudly. So I think something this major has to go beyond some of the scope that we see on the paper right here. So I wanted to throw that out, not necessarily to decide today, but certainly have as part of our strategy going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mark.
Well, that's, that's something we'll have to consider and talk about. I, I would just say at first blush that I, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, but the timing of it, we may have to consider because as Wes was just saying, there's some of the studies that frankly won't even be completed until the end of this year after, or about the same time as an election. So we, we might not have enough clarity on it all to, to have a referendum on it next year. But it's something we certainly should talk about and consider. Councilmember Shade and then Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mark, would you go back to, well, you got it up. Thank you. Sort of a little backdrop, Mayor. The, Mark participated in my monthly constituent meeting Saturday and did a wonderful job, a little long, but a wonderful job on this presentation, and some very good input on, I think, the folks who were paying attention and participated in that. Not as big as a crowd as I'd hoped, but I really do appreciate. And the more you go through this process, the more you understand it and absorb the enormity of this. So Mark, when is, and maybe I just totally missed it, when is our first check due? When do we have to come up with our first payment on this thing? You've got four phases of $150 million per phase. When do we make our first payment? So that's going to be an estimate on my part, and I'm going to be what I think is cautiously optimistic. So we've got to finish this study in 2021, October 2021. The best hope we would have is that this gets put into the 2022 Word of Bill that Congress hopefully will draft. They are supposed to come every two years. There's one ongoing right now in 2020. If it were to get into the 2022 Word of Bill, be authorized and appropriated, which is a, that's very, very rare on the first go, but let's just say for a minute that it did, that would mean in 2023, we would probably begin, sometime in 2023, 2024, begin the PED phase. And that's that total construction times 7%, times 35%.
That's 14.7 million.
For Phase 1, the cost to the city to fund the PED phase for Phase 1 would be $6 million. That's a rough estimate, using what the total cost from construction would be for Phase 1, multiplying that times 7%, and then times 35% would be about $6 million. That would be around 2024, 2025, we'd have two years of preliminary engineering and design, real estate acquisition during that time, and then we would begin construction probably 2026, 2027. I think those are the numbers and the time that Wes used. Again, that is incredibly optimistic. And, and so in the 2026, 2027, what would, what is our estimate check going to be for that, that period? So you start off, you start off with a very manageable $6 million. That's, I mean, it's a lot of money. But $6 million is a lot more manageable than $600 million. So it's going to substan- substantially after the first payment. Well, what begins to happen is you pay, so everything that we pay for in PED comes off of our $600 million contribution. And again, these are really rough estimates. So please, I have to caveat that over and over. The initial estimate for construction are, I don't have, hang on one second, PED cost, one or seven? I don't have the cost of the total construction, but let's assume it's divided by four, so that'd be $150 million per phase. 35% of that would be our cost minus what we spent in PED and minus what we spent for any real estate acquisitions. Which is around, I didn't keep up with your calculation. We said it would be $6 million that we would be spending in PED phase. Yeah, after the $6 million, then in 2026, 2027, we're looking at $150 million? Over the time of construction, which may be six or seven years. Yeah. But these are all really-
That's the total project of the phase. Our 35% share would be, less than $6 million would be $46 million.
There you go. That's right.
Less any real estate cost.
So our, that's why I'm confused. On our total, our total kick-in is $46 million? Is our total kick-in $600 million? $600 million is our total kick-in for the entire project. Right. But we begin a subtraction problem the minute we get to PED phase. Right. Following you. And as those costs come off, we get credited for that. Got that. If one phase is $150 million, 35% of that cost, no, I'm sorry, $150 million would be one quarter of our total cost share, $600 million. And that by like seven years.
Oh, I got you. That's right.
So you, that, that cost share for that phase, we, we pay over a period of seven years? Something like that, yeah. I have not actually confirmed that by, in writing, but I have confirmed that in conversations. I'd have to, you know, I have not seen that in writing, but I, that's one of the things we're going to work on over the next several months. So I guess what we, in, in doing this, and, and you, you went back into early part of your presentation about funding and what funds can we use, what funds can we not use? And we haven't got to that point yet. But at some point in time, and I'm, I'm sure Amy will walk us through this, hopefully she'll walk us through this, but we're going to have to be able to, to budget and say, our annual contribution is X number of dollars beginning at this particular date. And I mean, that's one way of doing this. And so per, per annual kick-in, we are, we need to budget this much money, and then we've got to figure out how to pay, how to accumulate that, that, those dollars. So, I mean, that's going to be the hard part of all this, is, is that, as this is going down the stream, I hate to use that phrase, but you know, you're talking about 2025, 2026, 2027, we're talking five, six, seven, eight years down the road, when this commitment kicks in, and this goes back to Councilmember Waring's comment earlier, we're starting to mortgage our future generation's ability to fund other projects. I mean, this is, this is really short down the road, but it's really long-deep town, town road. I mean, the five to 25-year period, as we go through this phase, we're, we're really mortgaging a good portion of our revenue towards this project. I think that is probably one of the hardest things we're going to have to understand and appreciate as we go through this process, the funding of it. I mean, we will have different inputs on the project itself, and then the call, and, and how the project's going to come into play. And as you mentioned on Saturday, Mark, what this is not taken into consideration is, after we get the keys to this new project, the maintenance on that project is all on us. So this is not taken into consideration, repair work, general maintenance work, et cetera, et cetera, that we're going to have to take in consideration. Once, once this, a storm comes and some, the storm does some damage to this beautiful wall, and we get to repair it, then we're going to be looking over our shoulder on how to come up with the money to re- repair it as well. I mean, that's, those are just thoughts I'm sharing with everybody.
I appreciate that a lot, but Councilmember Shade, I don't want you to forget about the estimated $95 million in average losses per year over a 50-year period of time, too. So we've got to consider that as well. Move on to Councilmember Jackson, so we can get back to Mark, because he does have some more presentation to bring to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to react to what Councilmember Waring put forward. I, I, I certainly think having an opportunity for our citizens to be heard in some sort of formal way like that, whether it's around the actual allocation of funds. Where my husband and I came from in Virginia, we would have citizens' resolutions on our ballots, and it, it didn't really result into any sort of formal law sometimes or expenditures. I, I've been saying to everybody who's asked me in this very short lead-in time, you know, what, what is it going to look like to be making decisions for, for this? As Councilmember Shade just said, you know, that, that the obligation of future that I personally probably won't share through the entirety of, of how important this will be to our community. So I, I do feel like we should be very thoughtful and, and not let go of making some sort of opportunity for citizens to tell us in no uncertain terms, you know, their, their own buy-in or willingness to take on these kinds of responsibilities, knowing the, the cost if, if we do not. And I think that's a major emphasis that we're going to have to help people understand, you know, if we do nothing or if we do too little. So we, we have a lot of deliberation to take, and I hope that we're not going to push ourselves into being too hardened about all of this. I think this is great to have this work session in the middle of the citizen comment period, the first citizen comment period. And I hope my door is wide open to hear from people, and I'm sure we all feel the same way. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So Mark, if I could ask you to pick back up where you left off.
Sure can.
Yep.
So now I'm moving on to our current and future worklists. And again, I just want to cover these topics. They're things for the future and things that I wanted to put on, I wanted to explain to city council so they could better understand it and explain to their constituents. Real estate, as has been mentioned many times, the city's responsible for all real estate actions. The cost of that is credited to our 35%. It's performed post-federal authorization and appropriations. We don't go out ahead of time and begin doing that, because who knows how long before this could be authorized or appropriated. As Wes had said, and as the mayor has actually mentioned, it's performed in PED phase. So it may alter the alignment with the tentative selective plan. We may find that it may be cheaper for us to acquire real estate going one direction or the other, and that would affect the total cost to the city again. I would add that, once we get to that point, that the capacity for our staff is really going to have to be increased to perform that over that two-year period. It's just a little note that I've put in there for, for city council to consider. The next one is operations and maintenance. It's already brought up, and I'm glad it was brought up. We took a trip to New Orleans, a small group of us, along with the Army Corps of Engineers, just to take a look at this, because we wanted to get our heads wrapped around how involved this is. It's 100% city responsibility. As Wes said, we signed an agreement. As Wes said, we signed an agreement. Um. It's uh, we're gonna have to take a look at over the next uh year. Uh, the money that it could potentially cost that we do it in-house versus contract. So this is something that, again, we'll be talking about over the next year. And I would love to have interactions as I think members of our staff would. And the mayor on what what kinds of uh things, concerns do you have with operations and maintenance? Um, stormwater integration, this has already been mentioned again. Um, and the mayor mentioned it. So they do have to mitigate for any excess rainfall caused by the project. There is a question out there of additional larger pumps. If we as a city. Went forward and said, we want more pump stations or we wanted larger pump stations, that would be considered a betterment. We would pay a hundred percent of that. Um, but it may provide us uh a benefit in that it could help with some stormwater issues. That needs more evaluation and this and study discussions for the future. But it does open up the discussion about a potential dual purpose for this particular wall. So I put it out there. We're very, very early in those uh discussions. In fact, if you looked at the Army Corps' project timeline today, the hydrology uh optimization phase is coming up next. So these are some of the things we'll be looking at over the next several months. Timeline, you heard Nancy's timeline. We know that we've got till May for the city to kind of really decide whether um we want to make a commitment for this. And I want to offer to the council opportunities for engagement. I will do information and outreach sessions uh by district as I did with councilmembers shade. I'll even make them a little bit shorter. Um, optimization updates to the peninsula. If any of the uh council members. Uh, are interested in how optimization is going, we would be very pleased to show you how that's moving. Because that's how we get a little bit of what we want and hopefully uh get a little bit of extra uh dollars into that. I would be happy to do walking discussions along the perimeter, district by district, if uh uh council members would like that. And then I think uh as we get closer to May, it'd be great to come back together and have another discussion with new studies and everything else that we learn between now and then. I will say this, and and I think anybody that you would talk to uh in this type of profession, the city's goal should be to get a science study. That's how we get in line for significant federal funding. Um, I hope that we can keep the focus on the whole city and its benefits. There's a lot of benefits that the peninsula brings to the city and to the region. But also to all of the people on the peninsula as well. And there's a lot of interest in different diverse groups on the peninsula. And we have to keep that in mind, and that's something that I work really hard to keep in mind, that it's important that everybody's represented. As we go forward on what is the best solution for this. I've reviewed the uh sea level rise strategy, the Dutch dialogues and the vulnerability assessment. All in the last forty eight hours, and I can tell you that all of them support the need for a solution to a storm surge. Uh, solution because storm surge is obviously the most costly thing that could occur to us. Um, it's also the one that um threatens life and property and puts it at risk. There's, you cannot deny after yesterday, the rainfall flooding is the most frequent. Um, thing that we face in terms of flooding on the peninsula. But the storm surge is the one that is the most costly and puts the most life and property at risk. The um Dutch dialogues recognize that storm surge is a necessary component. Uh, when we went to the Netherlands, that's where they start. Their country is surrounded by a storm surge system. They call it many different names, but that's the way they start. Very focused on life and safety. So I would add that. And then uh just um, this is the. Wes didn't have this slide up, but this is the uh, the one slide on the benefits. And you can see these down here. That's the number to focus on. The mayor's mentioned that several times. Ninety four point five million dollars per year for the cost of the study over the life of the study. And then here is how the breakdown is for the total project cost. This LURD is the uh, that's the land easements rights of way uh that's to the city. And this would be a cash contribution here for one point seven five. And as Wes said, there is a really, uh, if you look at this, here's the interest. Uh, during it is uh two hundred and sixty million dollars um to get to that total investment cost. And I do know that the risk that's been put in there for the uh, the uh cost going up. And how we bring it down is really quite high. So hopefully there's the opportunity to bring this down over the next year as we work through optimization. That concludes my presentation. What I'd like to do is answer any questions and see how I might be able to help you. Or things that I haven't answered that you would like me to go out and find answers to.
So I would just add a comment, Mark, that um you mentioned that the rainfall uh was more frequent, of course, in storm surge. But if trends, current trends continue, tidal flooding could be as frequent as rain events. You know, in the next ten to twenty years. So um, the this this protection against surge obviously also protects us against tidal as well.
And and if I could just add on that, and thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. So you heard Wes talk about the discussion on the eight foot tide. That's a discussion that we've been having in the PDT meetings. So I think where we're gonna settle is uh kind of exactly to the mayor's point that. If if we're gonna have a high tide event that would cause damage consistent with a coastal storm event. We would be able to close the gates. An example would be what occurred around Christmas last year, where the tide was coming into the city. Uh, just because of high tides, the city was flooding. We'd be able to close the gates and prevent a big portion of the flooding that occurred in the city. So that's the, that's the that we're working towards. We we uh understand, we fully support the idea that this has got to be more than just something. That we can close up for, you know, a category two or three storm. When we have those large tidal events that are becoming more and more frequent. We have to be able to use this to protect our investments inside the wall.
All right. Any uh comments or questions from council? Councilmember Waring.
Man, listen, all these big numbers, believe it or not, doesn't scare me. I mean, I think this community has the ability to do great things. But before we make a decision like, am I, yeah, before we make a decision like this, I think we need to have. Uh, we're focusing on a lot of information, obviously on the wall for obvious reasons. Um, but at what point in this process will all of us know, and I mean, when I mean all of us, the mayor and council know. What is it gonna cost to fix and repair the drainage problems west of the peninsula? By that I mean West Ashley's problems, James Island's problems, uh, and John's Island's problems. In other words, where's the study to tell us that? Because before you can effect effect, if we're gonna do this in a comprehensive way, we should know that now. Uh, we should know that estimate. Um. So what we'll do is we'll focus heavily on one issue, leaving the others for, I guess, the next generation. Uh, and I think if we're gonna do all this, all this ought to be wrapped up uh going forward. So you you won't say, well, the peninsula's got, there won't be a us against them. Uh, it's my belief that uh for a figure less than a hundred and fifty million dollars, you can fix every problem. West Ashley, James Island, and John's Island. And then instead of having a potential tug of war of us against them. You have a a collective we moving forward for a multi-billion dollar project. Um, you're gonna get the questions about the uh, because as I see it, uh, the um. Drainage product project for them, and the name is, my name is blocking right now, but Mike, you can help me out with this. The uh, the one that's gonna help the drainage problem, that's gonna help the medical district and obviously the lower peninsula.
Calhoun West.
Calhoun West. Thank you, Mike. Uh, obviously, if if we were to do that, we all in this together, right? Uh, if we, we're gonna come through it with a multi-billion dollar project. I still don't, I still see a need for Calhoun West, even though we have a wall. Um, so I, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I I, this is a big challenge that you brought forward to all of us. And I think we're all ready to meet the challenge. But we need to be able to ask those questions from the people out in the hinterland, if you will. Uh, those across the bridge who have substantial investments in their own right and their properties and businesses over there. To say, well, what about us? That question has already begun to come up. Um, and we should be able to answer that. And I, with all the information we already have. We should be able in a position to handle because we've known some of those situations since nineteen eighty four. We just didn't know the number. Given the 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 low interest rates that's out there today, uh, the lowest interest rates since any of us have been alive. There's a time to go out uh potentially for the federal government and state government, county government and and city government. To approach some of the financing on this. Uh, this is an environment to do it. And so I guess the timing is right from a financial standpoint, uh, modeling standpoint. But we do not have that information, and I don't think we're gonna be able to handle this one. Um, in a comprehensive way, if if the people, West Ashley, James Island, and John's Island. Problems, we may, we know them. We don't know what it's gonna cost to fix them and what the solutions are. So I think that should be part of this too.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. And um, as as a matter of fact, with that thought in mind, I I called on Matt Mountain this morning and asked him where we stood on AECOM's. Prioritization program. And uh, we we have that model. Uh, and or, as you know, we're now starting to put our other project information into that um. That that model, if you will, or program that AECOM has developed for us. And and so um, actually, the timeline of this works out that that we will. Um, uh, have a good handle on um, uh, as 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 well costed as this is. Uh, cost estimates for for the whole city. And in a a scheme, uh, uh, a a model by which we can prior prioritize. Um, uh, those other projects every everywhere throughout. So um, um, excellent point, excellent idea, and I I agree. We we've got to look at the whole picture at one time. And by the time we we get to the end of the year, I would hope we we would have a good handle on that. Certainly by the time of next May, when any decision would have to be made on this. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great point. Councilmember Griffin.
Yes, sir. Um, just briefly, uh. I know that we can do a referendum on a ballot that is uh non-binding, can't we? So that we would have the data, but we could still make our own decision. Isn't that possible?
Yes, I believe that's true.
So I'm, you know, I've support you, Councilmember uh Waring. I was talking about this with some West Ashley residents earlier today. And they said, hey, you know, anytime locally that we've spent this kind of money, and we're talking about over six hundred million dollars. We've done some sort of referendum pretty much every time. I mean, you look at asset sales tax and. I mean, you even look at uh twenty million dollars uh when I ran for the first time, it was on the ballot for the affordable housing. You know, whenever you're talking about spending a lot of money and you, you know, have such a big tax. It's ta- taxpayer buy in. I think it's important that we could have a referendum that would actually be a great data source for us. Because we don't have to actually vote on this until the middle of next year. Um, I would love to see us consider that option. I know that it's gonna take a little bit to get it on the ballot, but we've got some time. I think we have to submit it within like ninety days or before ninety days before the the election in November. But I would love for us to have some more discussion about that at a at a subsequent meeting. Second point, I I was speaking with Councilmember Seaking's earlier. I don't know if he's already made this point. But we've got to do a good job of making sure we incorporate this design into the Dutch dialogue since we uh pass that resolution. And make sure that they uh mesh together and hear uh from all of the guys that worked on that document and and have their their opinions on it too. Because spending this kind of money, the more opinions and more data that we have that we can look at. It's gonna help us make a better educated decision. And we've got to look, not just for us, but for our kids, our grandkids. All of that's been said already. But I think we, this is a a really great presentation and and I gotta give a thanks to the Army Corps of Engineers for making Charleston a priority. Uh, however, we cannot, uh, we definitely don't want to make a decision like this and and have any what ifs. And the only way to do that is to get every potential piece of data that we can get. And if reaching out and getting a hundred and fifty, you know, thousand people, more or less, you know, I guess it'd be a lot less with if you took away all the kids. But say a hundred thousand, um, well, not even that many people are gonna vote. Anyway, a a sub, a a very substantial number of people to vote that will vote in this election this year. If we had their their input, they live in the city of Charleston, I think it would do us a lot of good. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And and I would like to um, uh, agree with you on the point about getting our Dutch dialogue partners. To help us uh opine on on this matter. And in fact, as you may recall, just um at our last council meeting, we we hired Wagner and Ball. And they're associating the uh Water Institute of the Gulf um to help us with our long term plan revision. And and frankly, I plan to bring to council a small amendment or separate little agreement with them. To help us uh in the balance of this year to um with both engagement. And to make sure we're thinking about the Dutch dialogues uh, uh, precept with this plan. Um, the the the, I I'll I'll say again about the referendum. I I don't um. Uh, disagree, but it's a good idea. I do question the timing and we've got to talk further about that. And also, what are we gonna ask them? Because, you know, the the funding for this isn't gonna come from one place. The funding for this is gonna come from multiple places. And um, you know, we we may be proposing in the future. Uh, a peninsula wide municipal improvement district. That were or a municipal, a peninsula wide uh surcharge, if you will, to to the stormwater fee. So that um, um, you know, those properties that that uh benefit from this the most. Don't pay for it all, but maybe they pay a little extra share than than some other funding source. We've got to be creative and and look at any kind of um fun funding screen we could find if we're gonna pull. Not only this off, but as Councilmember Waring uh, um, um. Uh, alludes or or points out, the overall picture, what is it really gonna take to to fix the whole mess, y'all? And that's, that's what we gotta um ultimately go for. And if this is an important piece of of uh solving the whole mess, then it it's, it should be part of the, part of the bigger picture. Anyone else like to make a comment or question?
Yes, sir. I have a quick question for Mark. Mark, can you put up um slide number eight, please? Maybe seven, sorry. Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I just, I I thank you for the presentation and thank you for offering to come out and and let everybody know sort of all the things that you know, having been a participant in this from the get go. And it's complicated, it's big, there's a lot of things. Um, I I think one of the things from my perspective, as I look at the list here, and one of the things I think the city goal should be. Prior to getting this s- study signed, is to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck that we can get and the best project that's out there. And and I I, the mayor mentioned, you know, our our relationship with Wagner and Ball and the Water Institute of the Gulf. Are are we going to, Mark or or Mayor Teklenburg, are we planning on independently making comment back about this to the core during the comment period? Or is our participation all along gonna stand as our comment on this?
My understanding is since we're the non-federal partner, that we're able to make uh substantial comments. Prior to September the third as a partner. And and so um, um, my thought is uh even beyond June nineteenth. And 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 we'd add the engagement of of um Wagner and Ball and the Water Institute. To help um, a- as Mark described earlier, um, continue with community um outreach. The the walks, the ideas, add the Dutch dialogues to have have uh. Um, David and um, Dale take a look at it with us. And we would compile all those other recommendations as a partner uh by the Sep- September third date. Is that correct, Mark?
That's correct. Yes, sir. What I want to do is try to get, you know, again, I, I can't emphasize getting as much public comment in now as important to hear from the public. Working with the Army Corps through optimization is how we best get our thoughts, our ideas, our concerns. In the NED plan is the best way for the city to get this, our share reduced. But at the end of the day, and when we get all this community input and everything that we want, we, as a city, can give that input to the process as a non-federal sponsor. And through the next three to five years, as we get into ped phase or even later, as we phase this out, maybe second, third phase, I always like to use the example, things are not going to look the same in the city as they look right now when we get to different parts of the city. And we get to ped phase, things might change a little bit. Talking to Norfolk, which we have done twice now, and they're going through ped, it's clear to me that there's a lot of back and forth in the ped phase because things have changed. And when you actually get around to driving piles and doing real engineering sampling, coring samples, things have to move, and things will move. You can't do something and have been a three-year feasibility study, it's going to be static. But to get all that input in, we, we have time to do that. Even if it doesn't make it into the NED plan, we can make sure that it's mentioned in the final report.
Well, and I, I just think that's an important point, and that, that was something that I'm not sure I realized. I'm not sure if my colleagues did, that we had as the non-federal sponsor, an additional time to put something together. I, I do think, Mr. Mayor, that we should sooner rather than later engage the Water Institute to look at this sort of independently, which I know is on your mind. You know, as, as you said, I mean, there's engineering, architecture, city planning, geology, hydrology, all, all things, his, history, that all need to go into whatever comment we make, not only on the efficacy of the wall, how it fits into the big plan, and what it looks like. So I think, you know, in order for us to make comment intelligently, I think it would be great if we get them engaged sooner rather than later and get them to work so we don't give up each of those benchmarks along the way in making comment.
Right. It'll be coming soon. Now, I just wanted to get them the procurement finished for the, for the plan, for the update of the master plan.
Right. So for the, for the comprehensive plan, we've got them. We vote, we voted on that, right? So I mean, this would be separate and independent of that. I know money's tight, but this is a six-hundred-billion-dollar project. We've got some expertise out there. If it costs us a couple of dollars along the way, probably very wisely spent.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Waring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your comments before this about comprehensive, looking at comprehensive solutions. But to follow up on what Councilman Seekings just said, is there any way, Mr. Wilbert, that a, kind of like a fly-through, like they do in these buildings that aren't built, you know, virtual fly-through on what the building, what the wall will look like at various portions of the city? Can something like that be done? I would think that could be done. It'd be good, and let's get slow and a few, few dollars, getting more information out there.
Actually, some of that work's being done in the Design Center now.
Okay, great.
I'll reach out to the Army Corps and see what they have. I think they were working on some of that and some GIS work as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else? Well, thank you all for, for taking a couple of hours this afternoon. It obviously is that important to our city's future. We've got a Memorial Day weekend coming up. I hope y'all have a great Memorial Day and that we all keep in mind the purpose for Memorial Day, to remember those in our country's armed service who have, who have served us and who have given their life for their country. So without further ado, anything else for the good order? We will see you next Tuesday at our regular city council meeting. And y'all have a great week Memorial Day. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks.